Okay, I'd like to bring to order the Grandvine High School District's School Board Meeting, which is a special board meeting dated September 1st, 2020. Can I have the floor, please?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, and we are the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Brandon Moore, please.
Mr. Peter?
Here.
Dr. Carter?
Dr. Carter was not able to join us this evening. He was going to try to call him, but he had a board that's busy.
Mr. David Carter?
Here.
Mr. Emily?
Here.
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 Mr. Swiney?
Mr. Walther?
Yes.
Here. Okay, moving on to room number one, the Board of Directors' report type of motions to approve the items under the Board of Directors' report.
So moved.
Sheets, white amendment.
So, good evening, board members and audience and all those that might be joining us virtually. We obviously have a board meeting here this evening, but before we get started, I thought it might be good just to set the tone and provide just an update wherever you are for the first two days of school and give the board a feeling of how things are going. And of course, the items as well. Just to remind you and kind of walk through the day, things have been very, very serious. The first two days have been a wonderful experience for everyone in the school system for our students. The busing, the first two days went very smoothly in the morning. A few glitches were working out, and we'll think about what happened with busing this year because the regular bus route broke into two bus routes. So that's two unique buses, obviously BCTC buses for our middle tech students. We also have a kindergarten midday bus route. So a lot of moving parts with busing with all those moving parts. Again, a few small glitches, but went fairly well. As students came in, classes went really smooth this first couple of days. The students were great about wearing masks. The teachers were engaged. It was just wonderful to see students in the classroom connecting with teachers, engaging in party. The afternoon, as we transitioned to the afternoon, virtual learning pieces, I think, go very well in terms of us students being able to get on, connect with their teachers in the virtual environment, whether that was first grade or all the way up through the high school and major. Having to be in a hybrid setting and being half of our students here could allow us to be in a really good position to be able to have half the students, be able to follow our safety protocols. Actually brought home a sense of calm to the classes, to the building, because half of students work from there. So that was a really positive in terms of the student body as well. They've been great. I think honestly, excited to be here. I was talking to the parents today, and it was almost doubts. Usually kids are like, "Oh, I'm going to school." This time the kids are, it seems to be really eager and excited to be coming back. It gives them a chance to see their friends and meet new things in some places more than they've been on. From the position of kindergarten, that's going extremely well. We have AM kindergarten session, and then they go home with a bus, and then the PM come in with a separate bus, and then we have separate PM kindergarten. That is going extremely well. The kindergarten teachers are doing a great job connecting with the students. Do we not have to date programs just become what they would typically do in a full day? And that process is going really well. And again, with half the students, they're still getting through a lot of the content and process. So kindergartens are going really well. Our BCTC students, those that are BCTC, they are following the schedule that they are doing here in school. So if they're in school Monday, Tuesday, they're going to BCTC in the afternoon, Monday, Tuesday, and then vice versa on Monday, Friday. And that seems to be going very well as well. From a cleaning process, we were really lucky to have our paraprofessionals help with the cleaning process. And so the typical day what happens is we have cleaning supplies within the classrooms. So the teachers, if they're able, and they're willing, are able to wipe down the classrooms throughout the day. But then after one leaves, the paraprofessionals who would be normally working all day help out with the cleaning process. And so they have been a huge asset to this whole process. They go in and they wipe down all of our carpets. They wipe down the end around the seeds with disinfectant wipes. And then once that process is done, custodians come in and they clean all the floors, they clean the trash out, video on inspection of the room, make sure everything is cleaned, tidied up. And then they go through with a disinfectant mister and disinfect all the rooms. After all that's done, we seal the rooms with a sticker that says this room has been sealed, cleaned and sealed, clean and disinfected. It's sealed with a sticker, and then that sticker's not broken until the teacher comes in the next one. So it's a really good assurance that all the classrooms have been cleaned and have been disinfected before students and teachers come in the next day. So as a recap at a high level, we're not all, things are going really well. I thank the board for trusting us in this process. We've had a lot of conversations to get to this point on board meetings, but I really am appreciative of the plan that we have in place. Appreciative of our administrative staff, of our teachers, and of our support staff all coming together to provide this opportunity. Most likely, most thanking to our families for being patient with the summer, and to our students that have just completely fabricated this and made a great job to do to progress. This evening, as we look towards the agenda, the board has called this special meeting tonight as an opportunity to discuss the data metrics, which are incorporated into health and safety plans. The two items for discussion this evening are to evaluate the data metrics, to look at data metrics that the Department of Education has prescribed, and to use and evaluate the data metrics we have in our health and safety plan, which is currently 50 out of 100,000, as our gauge moves from the yellow to the red face. And the discussion and the board agenda specifically to move that from 50 to 100 to 100,000. So that is agenda item one. We'll tackle two of those items separately, but that is the first one that we'll address first. And then the second item is to evaluate how we are looking at the data when we make this decision. And so currently what's in the health and safety plan is to evaluate the data on a two-week rolling average. So we will use the data that comes in this week plus the data last week, average those together, and naturally we'll be using our number at that gauge of currently as 50, but as we're discussing, going to 100. We're looking to change that from a two, to a two-week rolling average to a four-week rolling average to help mitigate some of those factors and valleys that might happen with cases that were in the early pandemic. And all this data that we're talking about, just about what is on the C P A, all of the Forks County data that's released by the Department of Education and the Department of Education. Mr. Masia, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So the first agenda item is to approve updated metrics of the Grandvine High School District. We are looking to consider going from a 50 to 100,000 for safety of the school and education process. I'd like to turn it over to the public now to address the board in a forum here. We do have the microphone here to your left, and I ask that each member that comes forward represents themselves, obviously the name, you know, what township you're from. That would be appreciated. And then just understand that I'm going to ask for about a five-minute time here, just to kind of keep things rolling. I will let you know when the five minutes is up, and if there is a chance to continue your thoughts, please do so, so we can make room for the next person to come and talk. I would like, I would ask also that if you come up to the microphone, please, you know, get room. Let's not be occupied with the microphone, so maybe that's 16 distance, you know, for the next person that's coming up. So feel free to come up, and I can hear what you have to say.
Yes, sir. My name is Sean Stern, Rockland Township. Grandvine High School District Board Members. I'd first start by saying our family loves Grandvine High School District. We believe that this school and the community is the best in the entire area and has provided wonderful educational and extracurricular opportunities for our children. We feel fortunate to live in the district and recognize the dedication and commitment to excellence exemplified by the administration, instructors, staff, and school. I'm here to express our dismay and concern over rumors that maybe we may be putting a halt to in-person instruction, potentially those sports or extracurricular activities. We understand and appreciate the challenges caused by COVID-19 virus. However, the risks of holding regular in-classroom instruction and extracurricular activities so vital to students to learn and grow is less than the alternative. In fact, the CBC has stated the same. It is incomprehensible that given the low mortality risk this virus presents, there's consideration, consideration is being given to canceling in-person education. As a matter of fact, in the state of Pennsylvania, zero people have died from the age of zero to 24. It was difficult enough for our graduating seniors to experience school closures this past March. It prevented them from experiencing everlasting memories and achievements, and they will never have those opportunities back. We understood the rationale for that decision to close schools then. The uncertainty of the virus at that time made it the difficult but prudent choice. We get it, and we supported that initial decision. However, things are different now. Epidemiologists and other health professionals know much more about the virus now. Progress is being made towards therapeutics and vaccines are expected to be available within months. Hospitals are not being overrun, and continually updated preventative measures including PPE and social distancing guidelines are creating safe environments by helping people avoid infection. In short order, the diminishing risk from this virus will be gone, but the damage of not opening our schools and keeping in-person instruction could potentially last forever. Though this is nowhere near as similar to what occurred in March, and though there are risks to opening and staying open, they can be mitigated. Damage of not having in-school instruction and activities far outweighs the alternative. Educators and especially board members must seriously consider the irreversible damage to not only students but the entire education model as a whole. Students who enroll in soccer school or transfer to charter or private schools due to our closures may never return to Grandvine High School District. The result will be not only an immediate loss in talent, but also fiscal and structural damage that will impact the district and its taxpayers, not just this year, but for many years to come. Furthermore, instructors, aides, and support people who are rightfully concerned about health and safety should also themselves play a not returning to work against their long-term employment prospects. Fewer students ultimately means fewer staff. There will most certainly be a decline in students if the schools, if the school does not hold in-class instruction. Staffing and programming cuts will be necessary. This won't undermine the Grandvine High School District education program. Working adults always accept various levels of risk in today's work environment. Essential workers in a variety of fields continue to find safe ways to work throughout this outbreak. School is no different. The education of all children should not be sacrificed because the personnel staff are unwilling to accept that risk, especially when they have been provided with options such as a medical sabbatical, the use of sick days, and COVID. In-person education is essential, especially for the most vulnerable and staff or essential workers. Based on my research and looking at the data available in the county and here locally, we are far exceeding the recommendation by the state and by the great Dr. Fauci, which was to go 100% virtual for our community around us. It's 100 cases per 100,000 residents. Today, Forks County sits at a two-week average of only 51.9 per 100,000 residents. The zip codes in our school district sit at 23.46 per 100,000 residents. You all have worked very hard to put together the district's health and safety plan. I applaud your efforts. I know firsthand that you were in a thankless job, and that no matter what direction you go in, you will always have somebody upsets you. All we are asking is for you to give our kids a chance, give the plan that you created a chance to work. In closing, I ask, please, please be courageous, be creative, figure out how we can help Grandvine High School District stay open in the hybrid model. At the very least, for in-person education and extracurriculars. Failure to do so will have long-term negative impacts on our school district, instructors, our community, and most important, the children, especially the most vulnerable, who may find safety in solace in the school. These negative impacts are not opening, these negative impacts of not opening will linger on after the next few months, think long-term, not just for the moment.
You're fine. That is five minutes. You, Mr. Strahan?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Strahan. Anyone else? Please come forward.
I don't know that I can compare that. I really appreciate his thoughts. My name is Sherri O'Neal. We live in Long Swamp Township. And I guess I'll just do a little ad hoc here. I do want to thank everybody. I know you guys worked very hard to get here, to make all the decisions, and I really appreciate it. And I guess where I'm coming from is working a lot with youth in our church. And it was interesting to see over the summer, as we were working, as we started gathering again in person, how the excitement was building with many of those students about schools reopening. And then as we got further into July and August, as the word started changing, the school, a lot of the school districts, one at a time, started to go, or make announcements, excuse me, the announcements that they were going to go virtual. Just to hear some of their disappointment, some of their, just, I want to say sadness, because I think we sometimes didn't play as much as, as much as students would love to, how much they hate school. I think that what they really, what they saw in the spring of the shutdowns was how integral that was to them, and I think they really missed that. And we tried a lot of virtual stuff, meeting with youth from Zoom and everything, and it was, it was something where it was great for the first couple of weeks, and then you just watched the numbers go down because it just doesn't have that same impact. It's not, it's not reaching them because they, they're not making that connection. I think right now, there are so many youths that are missing those connections that the school and the district and sports just provides for them, and in the interaction with the teachers, that it, that just doesn't happen over Zoom call. There's a, there are those, there are so many teachers and administrators that there's just a heart for the students, and they know when the students are hurting, and they know when they, they need that attention, and that doesn't come through on a, on a, on our own call. And I guess where I'm coming from is just, I would hate to see after all the efforts that everybody has gone through here to so quickly say, hey, let's, now let's shut the things down right away. I think I love the idea of that, moving through the four-wheel level gap. I think that's great because there might be a little spike, but I guess, I guess I would just like to say that I would encourage you to definitely embrace that for, not only, I'm not even going to say for the parents, but really for the students. I think they really need that connection of, of all, of any of you that may be teachers, forgive me, I don't know who is and who isn't, but just what the district and what the school offers to them. I think they're missing, and I think they're hurting. We even had some kids who, we had one who attempted suicide just because fortunately, fortunately they didn't, that was not successful, but you can, that really drove that point home of how much school and those interactions really do mean to them. So I would never ask them, just consider that in the rest of the evening time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri. Excuse me, sir. Your last name was?
Peter.
Peter O'Neal? Okay. I have a list of people here, so I'll start calling any of them. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hello. Ryan Ornchell, Rockland Township. I'll start by saying I'm not as well researched or refined or articulate as the first two speakers, but I'll be brief. I have two young kids, elementary kids, one starting kindergarten this year, one had her in the third grade. So as mentioned earlier, my kids are, are and are looking forward to hopefully continuing in-person school as much as possible. You got the educational standpoint as well as the social interaction standpoint, which I would say at an age like that would be just as important as the educational component. I would hope and encourage that we are able to stay in-person as long as possible and hopefully don't go what I would consider reverting back to a more virtual and harmful scheduled one going forward. Speaking for myself only, I wish it would be all full-time backpack like normal. I know you guys are put in a box, and that's not going to happen probably anytime soon, but I wish our school would try, school district would try to move forward with getting back to a good, normal school session as soon as possible. So hopefully that's considered as the other two speakers also mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Hello. Hi, I'm Arielle.
Yeah, how are you?
Julia Lawhorn, I'm in this for township. I have a couple of questions for you guys. I think you're going to go over everything, going to kindly take your votes. I know that we're, I would like to know a lot about how long the CDC guidelines, what means you guys decide to pump down in that. I'd like to know the answer to that. I'd also like to know a lot about staying with consistency with our students to make sure that they can stay in school longer. I don't think that it is a good consideration to have them popping into this hybrid or virtual that will not keep them going well on school, like a lot of bad grades, students not coming in, not going online. I'd also like to find out what your plan is to help keep with good routines for them if you do stay in hybrid or if you are willing to go into this virtual. I'd like to know what the plan is to pump back to hybrid or then to go back to a green stage if you get to that point. What is the highest point for our spikes that you guys are considering if we go for this four-week structure and we're going to be counting four weeks? What highest spike that you would like to not see or see before, you know, you would consider as we go virtual? And would you consider it to be, would you consider looking for those spikes before we, you know, say we're going to go virtual?
Okay, can I just, Rebecca, I don't have a long, because that's
That's okay.
Number one, why are we not following the CDC guidelines?
Yeah. I'd like to know why we're not following them.
Keep going, because I don't have a second question.
I have to go back.
That's okay.
I'd like to know why you're not staying more consistent with our children staying hybrid. So I guess that kind of goes with what our vote is for today, keep them in a better routine.
Okay.
And then the last one for the board, with the spike, I know that we're voting to go back up to that 100 for the CDC, but what's the highest spike that you guys would consider? Are you going to go over that like we did right now? We also consider to be at school. If that happens again, I'll be prepared for that spike so that we don't have to have the rules and, you know, are we going to be in school or are we not going to be out of school to stay with consistency? Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Lawhorn, we will, we will try to address those once the board comments.
Outward question. I was interested in finding out how, from a data metric side, when you say that, is there any consideration being made for when we see spikes? Where are those spikes occurring? Are those spikes throughout, let's say, within any bracket, within the high school ages? Is it middle, is it, is it middle age? Is it nursing homes? I was just wondering if you could answer, if you ask or take that into consideration, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Mr. Masia, that seems to be a point of confusion. Maybe we should answer that question before we proceed on to public comment, and that might actually clarify some of the, some of the questions that we're about to receive. So, and I'm sorry, Gerald.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Julia, correct? I don't have my glasses on because I can't see when I breathe. Okay. So with the, with the spikes that you guys are talking about, that spike, that information's coming from the Department of Education. That guideline is available, I believe, on our website for the school reopening and on our health and safety plan. And what it shows or what it states is that if we have less than 10 cases in Berks County, new cases per week based on a rolling average of X number of weeks, right? That's part of our conversation tonight. To the side of X is going to be two weeks or four weeks. If we have less than 10 cases, new cases, we can go back to school full-time, all right? If we have between 10, and right now it's 50 cases, because that's what we initially had our conversation two weeks ago about, or the state guideline, which is 100 cases, we would stay in a hybrid model, all right? If we exceed 800 new cases in the county, we would go red, and we would just be completely shut down. We would go completely virtual. So your question about the spikes is, you know, right now as it stands, we would go from a hybrid model, which we're in right now, to a virtual model if the board decides to stay at 50 to 90. If the board decides to follow the state guidelines, then we would move to 100. Okay? And then also for the, just to kind of answer real quick, the following CDC guidelines, it's, we're following the guidelines of the state. So we're saying we're following state guidelines, that, you know, the numbers that were issued from the, from the Department of Education. Yep, I hear that right?
Yep. Do you want to explain if we're rolling average?
Correct. Okay, so we're rolling average. Right now as it stands, we take our rolling average, so we take this week and last week. The average number of new cases that are had, or the number of cases from last week, the number of cases from this week, we average them together, you know, separate, add them together, divided by two. If that number comes out to 450, school would shut down. What we're also going to be conversing about tonight is changing that rolling average from two weeks to four weeks, because we feel that that's, or some of us feel, or the logic behind it is that if we have a four-week rolling average, it were less prone to like a very severe spike, right? So if we have a nursing home in Totten, or we have a nursing home in Redden that sees a huge uptick of cases based off of testing, we're going to have those other three weeks to kind of isolate out that, that high random. The other side of the coin, though, is it also isolates out low randoms as well. So it's a, it's a base of average. So those are really the two conversation points tonight, but hopefully that be some answered DL's questions.
And that four-week rolling average will wind up being every Friday, Andrew, correct? The third part of the call is the information put in Friday.
So as we get through like four weeks, you know, I've seen comments and people asking me about it. Once we get through four weeks, it doesn't start all over again. It just goes to the next Friday, roll in the last three weeks. Move a week out, they roll in the last three weeks. Or if we stay in the two-week model, it's the week of four. A lot of people were confused with that and were asking me the question.
A lot of people were confused with that and were asking me the question via text and email and blah, blah, blah. So, just so everybody's on the same page, how that all works. Every Friday, there will be, if there's spikes, there will be decisions made.
And then with, with that four-week rolling average, say if exceeded and you shut down or you want to go virtual, would then, would that be a certain concept? Or is that because for the next Friday, we worry about like...
That, that would be until the next Friday. So, until the number came back down below either 50 or 100, depending on what the, the will of the board is this evening, you know, whatever gets below that number, school would start back in.
Okay, so it could be 50 a week. Well, I should say it would be a minimal one, depending on...
Correct, depending on, depending on how far out of that number through the average, yes. And realize those numbers, if I'm correct, Andrew, don't come out until like 1 o'clock on like a Friday afternoon. So, 1 o'clock Friday afternoon, we get the message, Andrew draws up a plan to send it out to you guys, and, you know, may that be that we're in yellow, we need to switch to red. By Monday, you could possibly be in red, just so everybody's aware of that.
I'm gonna ask that we continue public comment and then we can discuss this. I'd like to get some of the public comments.
Okay.
There's a lot here, it's okay, I just wanna make sure that we're keeping on task here, so. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Karen Polinsky from Topten. I did not circle yes or no because I wasn't sure.
What was your last name again?
Polinsky. So, my concern, and I appreciate like everybody else said, everything that you, the board, the faculty, the staff have done for our kids. This rolling, and I know we have to look at metrics, but this constant worry of change. I'm fortunate enough that I work from home, so moving from a hybrid to a full virtual or to a full-in-school does not affect me as much as a lot of our population working full-time, out of the house, having young children in kindergarten, pre-grad, having to balance childcare, busing, you know, those needs. I, at the drop of a hat, on a Friday, we could learn that we're going red and then what do these parents who have to find alternate childcare for their kids do? I think we need to continue with this 100, you know, for 100,000 and keep our kids in school because I'll tell you what, my fifth grader is a completely different person since being in school just two half-days. So, that's all.
Thank you, Sherri.
Hello, Walter Sahadak, Rockland Township. As everybody else has said, thank you for all you've done and putting these plans together and getting the kids back in school as much as they can happen. I'd just like to comment on two things. One, potential change to virtual and the effect that'll have on the B C T C students, with the fact that B C T C is following whatever the school district's plan is and by its nature, B C T C is a very hands-on learning experience. So, while right now at least they're getting in there two days a week, to change those students to full virtual will have a real effect on them because they're not able to get into their shops and do their hands-on activities. And then the second thing I wanted to comment on was I'm fully at support of moving the metric up to the 100 from the 50, but just that it is a little misleading and something that I, from my reading, we should be taking into account from the Department of Education is the percent positive as well. Obviously, over these last two weeks, we've seen, you know, an increase in the incidence per 100,000. Part of that is because there was over 500 additional tests done within the county between the two weeks, a difference of 500. The actual percent of positive tests actually dropped from 4.9 to 4.8%. You would expect the more tests that are done and the fact that they are testing individuals who have a reason to suspect that they've been exposed or have, you know, they're not just randomly testing people, it's people who are expected to have a reason. You would expect the number to go up, but percentage shows that it's actually, you know, percentage of positive tests have actually dropped. So, I think that's something that number needs to be looked at along with the incidence per 100,000. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jeremiah McCarty. I'm from Long Swamp Township. The, my biggest question and concern, I am definitely taking into consideration the value of in-person education. I believe it's very important. And my biggest concern isn't exactly what your number is. It is how do I know that you're going to be sticking with whatever plan is decided on? If you decide on it being 100 and then in two weeks we get to that line in the sand, how do we know that you're not gonna hold another meeting and change the number? Because from my understanding, we should be in red right now. Whether or not I support that, I would like to know that what you decide on is going to be what actually happens. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like more comments, please come down. I know there's people in other rooms and others want to cycle through. If you wanna maybe kind of get them in the hallway, we can bring down one at a time. Yes, sir.
Chris Rigg, Long Swamp Township. Okay, so I have a couple, a couple of comments, so. I, like most everyone who spoke thus far tonight, so agree with the value of in-person, of in-person education, right? And I think it's good to have our children back in school for a variety of, for a variety of reasons. So, that said, there's also talk about consistency, right, and maintaining that. Similar to the comments made just, just prior, I think if you look back at the history of how we got here, there's a pattern of very concerning behavior being exhibited, okay? So, a few weeks ago, right, there was a meeting in this room where the board and the administration so talked about the virtues and the hundreds of hours that went into a plan, how wonderful it was retaining St. Luke's to provide guidance, right, to develop the best plan possible. And I think your plan was adaptive, it was forward-thinking, and it was to be commended unlike other school districts around the region, right? You actually made an adaptive plan, and that was clearly communicated, right? Data's all public, everyone can go out and take a look at it, all right? So, that was approved on, on the 3rd, okay? Following that, okay, after months of work, you gave families of the district seven days to make a commitment for five months. Seven days, okay, to make a commitment for five months. After that, what happened? So, there was a meeting on the 17th, changed the plan. Changed the plan on the 17th and then you pushed back to start a school by a week. Change, 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 okay? And then on Friday of last week, so you chose to blatantly ignore the plan that was put in place. The number was over 50. Now, whether or not I agree with 50 is irrelevant. You put a plan in place. This is about integrity, commitment, and leadership, okay? And dealing with the outcome of what you approved. The reality is when the going got tough, you didn't wanna face the music, okay, for the decision that you made. That's not leadership. That's not leadership at all. You live with the decision that you made, okay, and you own up to it. That's what happens. You don't constantly change, okay? And after forcing families to commit to five months just on a whim recklessly, choose you wanna do something else. If I did that in my lineup, I'd be fired, okay? So, families have to be accountable to the decisions that we made, okay? And for the school district to not be accountable to those decisions now to just be able to change on a whim after you've made a commitment, that's just bad policy, okay? That's bad politics, that's bad schooling, okay? And it turns this place into a circus, not an educational institution. The board had all the opportunity, and you did, okay? Before the school started to evaluate the data from the state and make a decision, you chose not to change, okay? The outcome of your plan at 50 was inevitable. You can track the data, it's publicly available, available, you can look at the trends. I did it, I made a decision to go one way or the other based on knowing what the outcome of that plan would be. I'm certain I'm not alone, I'm betting. So, yes, it's about doing the right thing for the kids, but it's about integrity, commitment, and trust. Because the pattern of behavior says that the school district and board cannot be trusted. That's a bad place to be in. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Craig Rango. I'm from Rockland Township. It's really nice to see a lot more people out this time around. Last time there were barely any, any folks here when we had the last meeting, so I appreciate you all coming out. Again, my thanks for allowing me to speak and all the work you've done. Really appreciate it. So, I guess, I guess tonight, I am almost here to, I thought about this a lot, to talk about, you know, the narrative that we choose to write ourselves. Because clearly, you know, the last gentleman used the decisions that were made in the flexibility and the growth mindset as potentially a downfall and a negative, which I can see that. I've been on both sides of the coin in my profession. And however, I look at it as a, as a growth opportunity. I look at our board as a growth mindset, a mindset that is willing to adapt and change and modify policies in the best interest of our children, not necessarily what makes them feel good or look better or, or not. And really, right now, we're looking at a society and a new thrill that is basically choosing and picking their own narrative. It's like, what do you want to decide today? And you guys have to make decisions based on no direction whatsoever. And so, now you're changing your decision is absolutely amongst your prerogative and your ability to make those decisions because you made them based on limited data before in a never-changing environment, and now you're adapting and you're changing. And so, I don't look at that as a negative, I look at that as a positive. I look at it, you're showing our youth that we should be in a growth mindset and we should be able to adapt and flex to change and be able to accept these things and roll with it, not shut it down and become on a fixed mindset. We talk about that a lot. These are just bigger lessons than we learn besides math and reading. And I don't think we're putting our children at risk. I've said that the last time I spoke. I'm very confident in my school district, in my teachers, for everyone to make the right decisions and best healthcare of my children. And, and I really think we stand in the precipice and we really need, need to make the right decisions for our children, and we need to take that narrative of hope, optimism, you know, change, perseverance, coexistence with something that we are learning new every single day. The reason we made these choices before is because we didn't have the data. We didn't have raw, real data. Yes, we had numbers that we could look at, absolutely. That was coming out all the time, we had numbers to look at. But really, no specific guidance on how to interpret those numbers and what it actually looked like in reality. And that's a big difference. And so, I really implore the, the board to take that mindset of, like I said, hope, compassion, you know, gearing toward our children. People will forget, people will forget that you changed their mind because our children will have had a better experience and a better learning outcome. You know, so, so really, I, I, again, thank you. I push for the 100 because we're kind of exactly where I kind of anticipated we would be two weeks ago in front of this board. So, again, I appreciate it and I just wanted to stand in front of you and thank you for what you do and support the decision to move forward within school and hybrid. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, my name is Michael Howson. I live in Long Swamp Township, I have two children, Kay and third grader. Some of you know me, some of you don't. First off, you guys are in a thankless position, so as everybody else has said, we appreciate the efforts, we appreciate the work that you guys do. Based on what everybody has said, I'm gonna stand with Craig on my position as most agreeable to what Craig relayed to you as far as the 100. We completely agreed with the 100 number for a threshold. I know some others have expressed how their kids were excited and overjoyed to go back to school. My kindergarten was over the world to get into school. My third grader, again, most of you, some of you know my kind of, she was equally as happy to get back in. So, I think there is value to the kids being in school face-to-face with the teachers, one-on-one. I only have a couple of questions that I would like you to consider beyond moving to the 100. I personally, or my, my family and I, don't quite understand the reason for grades one and up going on the half-day schedule versus a full day for those two days that they're actually in full, full education. To me, I don't see what the difference is from a four- or five-hour day versus an eight-hour day. So, and the other option, or the other thing I would like you to consider is when you talk about the statistics, how they come out on a Friday and whatever it be, 1:00, 2:00 o'clock, you guys all realize how incredibly difficult and some, for some families, it's impossible to make those changes to our schedules and create a place for our children to go on a dime come Monday. So, I would like you at least consider potentially a week delay. So, if the numbers come out Friday and they're over the acceptable threshold that we, or that you decide on, is it possible to say, okay, the Monday a week from now, we're gonna go full virtual? To give families the opportunity to make preparations and make the appropriate plans to get their kids where they need to go? Because as other people have said, some of the families in the area don't have the means, whether it be financially, family, whatever. Some families are probably gonna have to leave their jobs. If their kids are home all the time, virtual, I'm sure there are some parents out there that are gonna have to quit their jobs. So, how do you expect a parent to go in Friday afternoon at 4:00 and tell their employer, "I have to quit in 48 hours"? It just puts an undue burden on us. So, I would like you at least consider maybe a one-week delay in that going route. Write it out for the next week, let families make preparations, and then we can all move forward. So, that's all I really have to say. One additional item, I know Mr. Potter and I have had multiple conversations. I think this man's commitment and his dedication to the school district is exemplary. I hope you guys realize that. I've received phone calls from him at 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night on items that have happened at school. He gets back to everybody, like the thing that his leadership trickles down through all the teachers and everybody else underneath him. And so far with the children that I have in the district, I have seen that. So, I just hope you guys realize that. And I trust him, if he thinks that 100 is a reasonable number to keep our children and our faculty and our staff, everybody else in our schools, safe, I trust that man to lead our district in the safest and most practical way to get the kids the best education possible, given the current situation. Thank you.
I wanted to call to pay sales for our artists. I wanted to push for the 100,000 also. I think in-school education and the safety of our children is a great factor, but I think our education for our children is also a great factor. And my daughter, I mean, she even wanted to come tonight because she wanted to express that, that interaction with teachers is such a big connection and it allows them to understand the curriculum and the education. the curriculum and the education a lot more than the virtual virtual. So I think the two days in school is definitely a great advantage for kids. And I greatly appreciate everything you guys are doing and the concerns and the steps you're taking to make sure the kids are definitely safe when they come here. But I definitely do think that the education and that interaction with teachers are definitely a great help for the kids, and I think you need that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Eritz. I last met you at the last school board meeting. Good evening, Mr. Pottinger. I would like to first express my deep gratitude and appreciation to all of the parents and community members who have expressed their support for the faculty and who recognize our professionalism and our importance in this community. We value that, and we thank you. I am here to represent members of the faculty who are concerned about the moving of the established board policy regarding the metrics that you all established were the safe and sound metrics to put forth. These metrics were used when faculty members made decisions about their choice whether they were going to stay in the building or to take sabbaticals or take the FFRSA. And we have several concerns about why the district is now choosing to consider moving those metrics. Because it doesn't seem like it is a decision rooted in the policy or the science. You know, we are already in the metrics that are above what were established. And so the concern is, is the board going to bend every time we reach the new metric to pressure that they're going to up the ante and choose to put people's health and safety in more danger because it feels good to be in school? So I understand everybody is excited to have a taste of normalcy, but at what cost? These are just concerns that we would like you to consider and think about. We also were curious if you have read the email that we sent you, if you've considered any of those concerns that we had forwarded to you. That is just something that we are asking if you are able to do. Conversely, when kids and teachers start getting sick, are you going to move the metric numbers in the opposite direction if you were so willing to bend your established Finally, we would just like to ask that you be proactive with your policy, stand by your hours-long debate and policy, and make a choice for the safety of our students, our staff, our faculty, our administrators, and our families. Thank you. I wanted to let you know that we did address your concerns at our last board meeting. You probably walked out the door, so you have to address those concerns. I apologize. None of my colleagues said you did, but thank you for saying that you did. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. My name is Erin Clark. I live in Rockland Township. Can I start with just a quick question? Because we keep talking about thresholds and increasing the case counts per the 100,000. My understanding is that the 100 per 100,000 cases is a guideline set by the state, correct? Is it a mandate, a recommendation, a guideline? Because we keep using words, and I just wanted to know, if we increase it to that, is it the final stop? Does the school district then at that point have the ability then to say, oh, we're going to go to 150, or is that the top of the, as far as we can go? Because everybody seems to have some concern that we're going to keep changing the game. I'm 100% for us going to that 100, but then I think we also need to, is that as far as we're going to go? Make a statement that that's as far as we're willing to go for parents. I, as a parent, I have three kids in this district, made the decision to send my children back. I weighed the pros and cons. I've accepted the risks. My family has accepted the risks, and my kids have, and I'm willing to take that on. And I'm just encouraging you to relook at this, revisit this. I'm encouraging you to increase the limit for data into the four weeks. I'm encouraging you to then increase it to the 100 per 100,000. Because I do feel that for me, in my situation, the benefits outweigh the risks right now. My kids need to be in school. While I would love to say I kill it at teaching math, I don't. You know, I am not at all good at it. I recognize that in addition, I need help. They need to see a teacher. They need to have that one-on-one interaction, teaching them, helping them, guiding them. So when they come home to me for those virtual days, they have a little bit more of an understanding as to what we're doing at home. That helps me. I then don't feel like I'm failing so much at my job. Because in addition to having a job as being a parent and teaching this now hybrid format, I have a real job. You know? So I can only do my best, but sometimes it's a struggle. And I feel like this hybrid option gives me a better chance at keeping my kids successful and helping them become better, staying a better student. So please, I would just encourage you to just look at the options and consider it. Thank you.
Hoping my comments aren't taken negatively, being that both of my kids, as I said, are in kindergarten and third grade here. For the faculty, and again, I say this with most respect for what you do, both my parents and teachers, my sister, mother-in-law, our stepdaughter also, but many of us, and I would say, many of us with other jobs, don't have the opportunity for sabbatical. You got to go to work. So if safety is based off of numbers and statistics, we're not running a nursing home, we're running the school. If you look at the statistics put out by the state for the age groups, they are minimally infected as compared to the higher age groups in nursing homes. I find it, I understand you guys have heard, you know, looked into what you can do, certainly, but I would, if it was up to me, I'd post 200, 300 per 100,000. It's mind-numbingly frustrating to me that, you know, an outbreak at a nursing home in Berks County somewhere will affect whether my child comes to school or not. So again, I don't know if anyone agrees, and it doesn't matter, kind of venting, if you will, but that's my thought. If you're worried that, the faculty is worried about the safety, from what it sounds like, you had the opportunity for sabbatical. A lot of myself, I would have a much more black-and-white choice. Get another job or come to work. There's already safety protocols in place here than most other places. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask if there's any more first comments. I know there are a lot of people on my list in front of me that have said yes, that they would like to speak. I'm asking that if you'd like to speak, please come to the microphone. Okay, if you want to go ahead and Mr. Tavasi.
To the board, to echo what this gentleman was saying. I think the faculty, also, I have a wife that's a teacher. She teaches brain language. She's a teacher as well, so I live this life as well. There are avenues that your teachers have that other people in the workplace don't have. They have to make a decision for themselves as to whether this is for them or not. To me, being a teacher is a great opportunity, but at the end of the day, if you don't feel safe, if you don't feel comfortable, then you need to make a personal decision for yourself that should not be shouldered on, the burden should not be put on the children of this school district. If you are not comfortable, find something else to do. It's as simple as that. There's three ways you can deal with this as a faculty member. That's a lot more than anybody else in this room probably has. I just want to remind you guys that you guys have put a plan in place, and the state has put a plan in place that allows for them to consider other options. And the final option that they have is, because of the circumstances, go find something else instead of that. But at the end of the day, we should not be making decisions that is going to affect all the kids in this school district based on somebody's level of uncomfortableness in the workplace.
Anyone else? We got another quote. Second comment.
No, rather, please.
On the number thing, just someone wants to say, like, that's going to change forever. That number's going to change forever and a day, because it needs to. Because as we get better, and as we're getting better at dealing with this, and as we get vaccines, that number will forever, ever change. That number cannot be fixed and/or stagnant. You know, it has to change and have to adapt, so we can adapt and we can grow. So I mean, that number, I think, you know, I've heard some, yeah, obviously, we're talking about it, but I don't want to say it lost it. You know, because it's going to change. It could change two weeks from now. Two, you know, and one from now, the CDC could say, hey, it's gone. Let's go back to school. Is it going to happen? You know, but I mean, we needed that in the man Evan Flot and Edward T.
Hi. My name is Christopher Love. I live in the rural town. And I guess my thing is, I'm trying to say, avoid going all virtual. I'm looking at the end of last school season and already two days into this school season, I've already seen two things happen with my kids in my household. I got three kids in the school district. If we go all virtual, and the kids are having a problem with something, not understanding something, I understand, yes, they can email the teacher, but an email is also like a text. You can send it one way and interpret it another way. And my stepdaughter, she had that issue last year. She's like, I emailed the teacher, she emailed me that, yes, but I'm still not understanding what I'm trying to be supposed to be learning here. And the same thing tonight with my son. He had an assignment to do, excuse me. And he was having a problem with his homework, and he emailed the teacher, and he actually worried it, I'm going to say wrong, but he was trying to figure out. And when I got home from work, it took me 10 minutes to figure out what he was trying to act. So how do we expect these children to get help they need for 100% virtual, at least for at least hybrid, even one day that these kids can see the teachers? The teachers can explain it to them better in a way that these children can understand it versus an email or maybe even virtual? Because the student may not ask them to step up if they're on a computer. I know myself, I've done these meetings virtually, and I absolutely hate them. I'd rather be sitting in the meeting for three hours and be bored out of my mind and face-to-face than sit there at a computer screen. But again, my question is, how do we fix that if the students aren't understanding what they're learning and the email's not helping them either, and we go all virtual? Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Well, let's start, let's go ahead and transition into fourth comment. One thing I'd like to, I know I throw down a couple of questions that I heard with the themes here. What I'd like to start with, I think, and maybe if you have some comment about this commentary, is, you know, the changes that we as a board have made and how we got to this point. And I think there's been some concern about lack of leader, I've heard, lack of leadership has a theme here. And I personally want to address that, and I think you ought, should be given the opportunity to address that to the public. I want to be clear on something here. I understand that there is concern about, you know, what maybe projected as some wave here in lack of leadership, but I want you to understand that what I'm most concerned about here is the fact that this virus is fluid. It, it's not stacked. There's a lot of information being thrown out there on a day-to-day basis. And I want everybody to understand that our decisions are made based on that fact. Okay? So you may think there's an agenda here, call it what you want. I'm not here to stand that there is an agenda. I just want everyone to be vocalize what their feelings on this are. Yes, we talked about the 50 mark that was discussed. A lot of things were discussed at that last board meeting. We had a very broad health and safety plan that we enacted. The 50 mark, I think, is something that needs to be looked at personally. And that's where I kind of think we need to be. And I think Mr. Hock, I'll kind of put it that way too, that as a healthcare provider, what I'm seeing is that, that is, you know, the hospital's not full of sick, sick individuals like I saw in April and then. We're seeing trends down. Now, whether that trend continues or whether that trend maybe goes up a little bit, we'll see. We have to, we have to get to that. But the point is, I think, we're at a situation now that was much different than three weeks ago. And to be fair, lastly, the metrics that were set aside by the health and safety plan were from guidance from St. Luke's. I appreciate that. We loved that, that was that. At 1025, we made a change from 10 to 50 to stay in the hybrid. We kept the 50 mark. It was discussed a little bit at the last meeting, I believe. And we just didn't get a consensus to that, because again, there are a lot going on at that meeting. So I don't think lack of leadership, in my opinion, is the right word here. I take some offense to that, to be quite honest. What I think we are doing here is looking at a situation where now we have data that supports that these numbers, even though we're looking at Berks County as that 51 or 52 mark, we're also seeing local data that is well, well, well below that, you know, in the 20 range. So my personal, I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to kind of make that statement, and if anybody wants to discuss that or have any comment to that, please, if you're from a board standpoint.
I mean, I compare with Mr. Tavasi. I mean, one of the biggest things I think that is kind of getting lost is the fact that the 100 number that we're talking about is counting numbers. We're not talking about community numbers. If we had 100 new cases in our community, there wouldn't be a conversation. So the conversation about, you know, doing what's right for the kids or being unsafe, that's kind of unfair to the board and to the administration. Because really, what we're saying is, is that in the county, we shouldn't be affected by stuff that happens farther away from us. When we got that 100 number two weeks ago, like Mr. Tavasi said, we have board members that are of different jobs. We all do different things. Trying to process that amount of information and trying to process those numbers when you have literally two hours, you've got a bunch of competing opinions and ideas and comments coming at you, is a difficult task. I'm proud of my colleagues that we've decided to come here and have this second meeting. I mean, you can say we're flip-flopping, you can say we're being hypocritical, but the reality is, I'm going to quote the Beastie Boys, I'm going to quote MCA. I'd rather be a hypocrite than keep doing. I'd rather be a hypocrite than keep doing the wrong thing. All right? So that's my biggest issue is that, you know, we gotta make sure that we understand that there are different policies here. And the community also needs to educate themselves on what our health and safety policy is. Because we also have a policy or an item within that policy that dictates what happens if something happens at our schools. All right? That is a very different policy than a, not arbitrary, but a community number, right? Or part of a county number. All right? What's going on in our school, that is not something we will flip-flop on. That is not something that is open for discussion or debate. But if we've got 20 cases in our community and there's, you know, we're kind of getting land blasted by rednecks or by, you know, floodwater or whatever, you know, we need to, as the local, you know, community government, really kind of try and say, "You know what? We need to look at this instead." The other, one other thing, I forget the gentleman who said it, I'm sorry. Mr. Hockel. You know, with, I would love to tell you that we would be able to do something along those lines of, you know, giving, you know, pushing it off a week. But the reality is, when we get to that point, you kind of have to make, you have to make the decision at that point. But the one thing that I will say is, with a four-week rolling average, no one should really be caught unaware by that. So if we move that number to 100, I think a four-week rolling average and you see that number approaching 80 or 90, we all kind of know where that might go. And I think that people have to start making, you know, some concessions or some plans at that point. So hopefully, it's not something that I think you want to hear, but it is something that I think you'll have more lead time if we go with the four weeks.
I do want to say something too about, like, this meeting tonight. We didn't just decide to have this meeting. There was an outcry for us to get together and re-discuss this, what's going on here. It's not that we just decided to change numbers. There was so many community families that spoke up and asked us to look at this, as you can see through everyone here tonight. So it's not just something that we are making up and going off of. We are listening to the people who we are representing. Yeah, someone else asked. It was, I wrote down the numbers thing. It was also, I know when we talked about keeping it at 50, it was from the hospital guidance, but it was also what the state had done in the beginning. And we weren't given any guidance when we first decided on those numbers. Because during the August 3 meeting, we had no guidance, no numbers to go off of. So that was our best guess based on how the government, how counties were reopening and then what that was given. But then, when the state or the Department of Education or the Department of Health came out, we were given more guidance.
Right. And to be fair, those numbers came out right before the last meeting. So I think a lot of us, we discussed it in some detail, but we didn't really have a chance to digest that data and see what has happened within the community, to be fair, for my eyes. I always say.
And Mr. Tabassi, I think, I give the board a lot of credit. Because the reason we're here tonight is because you're using data to make decisions. There's others, the others, when the thing came out that you have to reopen, here's the guidance. The last 500 school districts figured it out. And other school districts are kind of shooting from the hip and they're not using data. So, to Mr. Hockel, you did a good job of outlining the history of how we got here. Because we didn't, we weren't given the data metrics to start. We had to find our data metrics. We all invested in, "Let's use numbers, let's use data to make a decision." Which we did. We came up with our own. And then the state, as Mr. Tabassi just pointed out, after we created those, they came up and said, "Wait, here's, you can use now a threshold of 10." We could go as low as 10 or we can go all the way up to 100. And so they did, this was a guide, like someone asked us, a mandate, it's a guideline. So we can pick anything in between. We decided to stay with the 50 at that point. And now we're reevaluating that at this point, which is the, again, the side of right. Like you pointed out, the door to that is even fucked up. But there's one that we now kind of, at this high level, we say, "We're still making decisions with data." We are now using our data to determine what is at that cutoff point. That's the reason why this is the decision. Thank you for using data.
Another thing, just so the fellow can be aware, when we came up with this plan, we all decided that this isn't a set-in-stone plan. We need to be able to be fluid with it and to change it when needed. And we put that, we all discussed that and said that because every week something comes out. Every week something is different. And to give our kids the best opportunity, we need to be able to change based on what we are learning and what we know.
Mr. Hockel, I just think, again, something was taken from the, I apologize for taking another board member's time, but there was a couple of comments about staff having the opportunity for other reasons. And that is absolutely correct. I just want to make sure that, I think, if the board members all realize this, but our staff, our teachers are critical to our process. Everyone has said, "It's so important to be here." It's so important to be here because of our teachers. We have phenomenal staff. They have led us beyond to get us to this point, to be able to sit here today and say, "Let's stay open longer." So I just want to make sure that, I know as a board we all feel that way, but as a public comment, I would just say, "We have a phenomenal staff." They have been awesome to work with along the way and have got us to do this awesome thing. So I just want to make sure, on behalf of myself as administrative team and, I believe, the board, we have a phenomenal level of, of, of.
And there was questions. I just want to kind of address some of the questions. Data metrics spikes. We talked about the four-week rolling average and to discuss the possibility that with the four weeks, we could certainly have the ability to see some of the peaks and valleys and give us a little bit more data. That is, again, I think, Mr., she mentioned that that is, data that is rolling. So we would be transitioning and dropping weeks as time goes on to go to that current situation. So let's see what else, what other questions we have. So about changing the plan, we were talking about that. Mr. Hockel, can you talk a little bit more about when we transitioned plans, transitioned the decisions on plans, like the one models and that's based on whatever metric we decided back on today?
Yeah, so there was a question about how do we transition back? And it is clearly articulated in our health and safety plan, what we do in the case of moving from, because we have to go virtual and go back to yellow. And so what is written is, if the numbers indicate a positive trend and there are fewer cases, the board will make adjustments to move to a less restrictive phase at the next virtual scheduled board meeting or as needed. So it gives the board the opportunity at the next board meeting, the board meetings that are typically the first Monday of the month. So if, for some reason tomorrow, we would go into a virtual environment, then we would have that opportunity at the next board meeting to talk about and analyze the data and the board at that point can decide if we want to move back into the yellow phase, if we want to stay where we are, because the data is indicating that it's still not okay to reopen or move back to a less restrictive phase. That's what's written in our plan right now. Again, it is presented at the next board of the scope set for me with the caveat that it also could be done as needed if something would cause us to be earlier, like especially in this, and decide to change the plan to a less restrictive plan. That's the transition plan, that's the state of the health and safety plan that we go to the one last board meeting that we discussed this process.
Andrew, do you want to go over, I think a lot of people are confused, you know, in the red model, our full virtual model. I think people are really confused and think that it's the same thing that we did last March. And if you can explain that it's something totally different, they will have a teacher present, blah, blah, blah. Did you want to go into that or?
Yeah, as a high level, the model that we used in the spring was kind of a mutual reaction to this stay close to Florida. So we decided to do what in education we call asynchronous environment, where we give all the data, we give the work or the schoolwork to the students. They do it and turn it to the teacher and then the teacher has, is there for support. We call it an off-the-sound. The plan this fall, if we would go into the red phase, is more of a, what we call asynchronous environment, where teachers will actually keep doing live teaching with the students of the lessons. We feel that that's really important. We thought that last fall or last spring worked well, but as we evaluated this and we had more time to prepare for this spring or, this fall, if we would happen to go into a virtual or red phase, it would be live teaching sessions that the teachers would be doing with the students. And that way they'd get better with next. The students are still not quite the same as being in person, but we feel it's critical to have those connections with the students on a regular basis.
Any other board comments?
I just have a couple. As we move forward here, you know, I went back today and I looked through data from Berks County to week rolling averages from April, May, you know, back when we started making these decisions. Or I should say, when the administration started their plan. Back in April, if I'm correct, the two-week rolling average early, earlier mid-April was probably like 363. You move into May and it dropped 200. So as we move forward, obviously, it's been dropping. And to some extent, I agree with going to the 100. My only problem, I would say, would be all, at most of that time, Pennsylvania was locked down. Okay? Kids weren't together. You know, you didn't have, at least I didn't, maybe somebody you didn't, I don't know. You know, I didn't send my kid to a sleepover. I wouldn't send my kid to another kid's house. Everybody stayed at home. We did what we had to do. Now we're putting kids into a school and I agree with only half of them going in. I love that idea. But I don't really think that we have the metrics of what kids in school for a long period of time would be. I'm not saying the 100 plan is wrong. I'm just saying, do we have enough information to necessarily change what we set forth? From what I'm hearing from my colleagues, probably. But I worry about what it will look like in another month when these kids go back, like say, like a hammer went back to full. Full send green. What will that look like in four to six weeks? We don't know. But do we modify our plan before we even know that model? I don't know. I'm 50/50 on it. And I want to thank all the public for coming out. I read, I think I got a total of four to five emails. There was some students, I'm gonna say there was four or five students who, they were pretty upset that we didn't go red when we said we were going red. There was, I think, close to 40 that are on the 100, but which I'm almost there myself, looking at past data and how we've dropped. But I will say this, I heard you all, as you're here now, come to our academic presentation. Come to when we have budget meetings. Learn where, you know, all the money goes, why it goes, and not just the things like this. So I appreciate all the emails.
So I'll echo that. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. We wish as board members that we have this level of participation at every meeting on many of the topics that we may discuss. Then we know that you really care about, we do, I say collectively as a board, I'm not just speaking for myself. We do really want to actively listen through our constituents. We're not just giving our personal opinions here, but we're doing our best to represent sort of the broader public. This topic is so powerful. It is public health we're talking about. Population health. This isn't about our individual families, our individual kids only. This is about our community and the broader picture. And as a result, it forces us to not be selfish in our decision-making. So that, just keep in mind, inside of mine myself, every time we're forced to make a decision or actually make a decision, that it's not just about me. And what I think, in this instance, it's about greater good. I don't think there's a person in this room, both board members, clearly there is a common theme about interest in getting and staying in the building. I don't think there is one of us on stage that doesn't want that. We want that for our children. There's no question. And please don't hesitate for a moment to believe that that is what we want. The issue becomes, how do we do that without putting the community and families and children and staff and administrators and parents and grandparents at risk? To the point that folks have already made, it's fluid. We don't have all the answers. We've learned a lot since the spring until now. We're gonna continue every single day to learn a lot. So I'm on the fence with this issue of who you made a decision to stick with it versus, you know, be responsive and reactive. It's a dynamic plan. It's not a static plan. I suppose. It is challenging to be hip-washed and we're potentially about to hip-wash people. That's never fun. By the same token, things are changing every single day. And I think good leadership does reflect the growth mindset that someone uses as a term as being responsive and adaptive. One of the ways in my mind that we continue to enable the hybrid model or the full green model is with conservative decision-making right now. If we start loosening up too soon, too aggressively, I'm very concerned that it will blow back to our faces and recovering from that will be far, far difficult. What I mean by that, it is much easier to go to green, I'm sorry, it is much easier to go to red than it is to go to green in terms of runway. You don't need any runway. You go to red. If there's an outbreak, we will have to pull the trigger with zero lead time. And then getting out of red will be very, very difficult. If we stay in yellow. Kind of, you know, medium. If we push to green and it fails, again, it is very difficult to recover from that. So my vibe tends to be, let's continue to be open to feedback, talk to the data, look at the numbers. But a conservative approach will give us the opportunity to go home. A more aggressive approach may blow the whole thing up pretty fast. So I have more comments and a number of questions, but I'll stop there and the others.
And I just want to say, I feel fully confident in the health and safety plan as presented, Andrew, in regards to what is in that plan that's to be our children's staff safe. You guys put a lot of effort on different committees that have been involved in that, that have built into that plan. I agree that that thing was a very, is very concrete, well thought-out plan. You brought multiple stakeholders to this. My apologies for forward thinking on that. And quite frankly, personally, I feel like I'm totally on board with the safety. Understanding that that plan is safe, very safe, in my opinion. Spacing the kids out, making sure we have cleaning processes in place, making sure that the building is clean, making sure that sterilization, you know, and that basis. All those things are occurring. So I feel, personally feel very comfortable with the safety aspects of that plan. With that being said, we do have specific guidelines that we are following when it comes to kids or staff in our building that may potentially get sick. This is not a willy-nilly made-up thing that we as a board are are just gonna be reactive to. We are giving our superintendent the full ability to, with the guidance of local health department, the Department of Health, to make decisions on if, God forbid, we get to that. to make decisions on if, God forbid, we get to that point, I'll be closed. And that's, in my opinion, more the issue that we're gonna be tasked with down the road, that he's gonna be tasked with down the road. When is that decision made? And we even kind of discussed this as a group like at the last meeting, like, you know, what is, what are you gonna do to ensure that that's gonna happen? And you give us confidence and you respond and say, we're gonna follow the Department of Health, we're gonna follow their guidelines. And I'm not, I'm not gonna be quick to get that information out to the public. And unfortunately, having made the decision that, we hope never comes. So to be clear, we are in the intermediate phase based on this data, okay? So in other words, if we have a case in our building that occurs at any given time, one student, one staff, one building, we have guidelines in place to say, we clean, we do things, they're all there, they're all out there for you. The other thing that I would say is if we get to a point where we have more than one kid in a building, we have guidelines there. And it goes on and on up. So if we get to that point, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the scenario, that's gonna be the situation where we make, you know, human decisions to close like that, and it's gonna be a potentially long period of time. And there's no leeway of that. There's absolutely no leeway. We as a board will not support that. We need to get that information out quickly, responsibly, and we have to do the right thing. Okay, so.
So what we have, just to reiterate that point, what we have in our health and safety plan is a warning that says that we will follow the Pennsylvania Department of Education, vote responding to COVID cases at school, framework, or directly with Department of Health, guys. That framework that Mr. Patazzi is talking about illustrates a capable format, what we will do if there's cases. And articulate a number of cases and what the action plan is going to be with the school district. And then again, through the Department of Health, PMA and Department of Education, they've developed a hotline for school districts to warn for cases as they might have done if that would happen to happen.
Our policy is if we go red, any PI double A sports we have are canceled, is that correct?
That's how we have it, yes.
We're here tonight to vote just on me too. I think we're not, so we've approved our health and safety plan. I feel like we're starting to circle back around Hannah back to health and safety plan. Can we move over now?
Sure. I just want to get everybody comments and make sure that we're at a state.
Yeah, I understand you're, you're saying we're following the Department of Health and the Department of Education guidelines, but yet the guidelines that they put up with the numbers, everyone is not wanting to follow. That's where, and that's what I, at the last meeting was, that's why I wanted it as well. So we're going to follow the guidelines, follow the guidelines. So we're just, we keep harping, we're following all these guidelines, yet we're not. We're being very conservative right now, that's, you know, we shouldn't shut down. We shouldn't have let any of our kids go back to school. So by making a number that we wanted to use instead of letting them back. So.
For me, I think with a lot of the others, if you, Mr. Patazzi, recap, here is the number fifty come from that was your recommendation to the board several weeks ago in the first right off of the health and safety plan that the board approved. There was, there was a comment earlier that the guidance for providing safety in our relationship with that kid group. So would you kind of just backtrack us a little bit and give us a mystery of how did we get to fifty? And why did we land there? Why was I in the recommendation at the time?
So when we first met, and I believe the first meeting was always for the health and safety plan. I felt it was critical that we develop some kind of metric in that plan, presented to the board that has data included, so we had to clear up. At that point in time, there was no data available. I contacted the Department of Health, I contacted the Department of Education, and both of them had quite a deal with each other and none of them were willing to give us that information. So we then started to do some of our own research and found that the state used the cut point of fifty per one hundred thousand as a way to release all the counties back from the red base and everyone was red into the yellow basis. That was our, that was our metric that the state had, that was the state that stopped and measured group counties from red into the yellow. They never adopted a yellow to green metric. So we used that fifty as a thought, and then we talked with St. Luke's and their medical department, the school district, and they validated that, that that, you know, and even they validated, we looked at the frauds, the EBS, they said that's a good conservative number that followed what the state was recognizing and that recommending when they had moved from there to the yellow. And they fully admitted that there's nothing else to prove from a, at that point, we had presented that in August. There was no other data metrics out there. So that's when we, we had that look at the plan, we said, well, let's use the zero to five to green, twenty-five to fifty. Again, that was based on what PE did when the health and safety guidance was issued. So that was down to the fifty. And then we subsequently went to the August seventeen meeting. That's when, that was the new kind of reaction that Mr. Patazzi mentioned there. The PE guidance came out, whether that was right before or right after that meeting, I don't know what it was, but it definitely gave us a baseline for us to evaluate. That is, we then decided we'd be down there at that point. And by the way, certainly back today, they use the, I think, like your questions have been there.
So to clarify, we started at fifty because we did some of our own research and then got it validated by the Medical Professional Partnership votes in Salomon. We didn't move to a hundred when the Pennsylvania Department of Education came out with one hundred because of a time point issue. We were voting on revisions to the health and safety plan, essentially the Monday after the Friday, that that statistic from PE changed to a hundred, correct?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Very limited time frame for us to respond or react.
Right, I'm gonna say that, that is a good guidance, using, using that.
And the one hundred from PE is, has been issued on all the tables, so to speak, and since they've got it for several weeks now?
Yes. When you, I'm not sure what you.
Just in other words, it hasn't changed. They haven't moved it back to fifty and they haven't moved it to five hundred. It's been consistently at one hundred since it was issued several weeks ago.
That's correct.
Okay. And I lost my train of thought there with yourself. And they're not hearing from PDE or getting any inklings, if you will, that that's about to change.
No.
Okay, there's no indicators that he's about to move that number.
That's correct. Everything is pointing to moving that ten to the number of the yellow base.
Okay. So to put that in line, can we clarify also, we are using the Berks County number. There's been some question as to, is that too broad of a number? And why haven't we considered using a more local number? Can you clarify or quote why we chose not to just focus on the difficulties that our district's students and family present?
Yeah, so I just tried to pull up the, oh, yeah, the Pennsylvania Department of Education guidance out of the work. The Pennsylvania Department of Education guidance with that ten to fifty, ten to a hundred range that got down. That has not been said, stated in the county guide, the county data. So we adopted that as, again, if you go back to history, revision was, that was a move just from a red to a yellow. The government's fifty, fifty cut point, supported by medical guidance. And then they still continue to, they're in the reach now, continue to use that county data metric as that company.
Okay, but again, just to be personal clear, PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education guidance is to use county data or school districts to use county data, not local data, and to use the metric. That's of the last couple of weeks of a hundred cases per one hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Okay. And then there was also a comment from the audience about positivity tested, like the positivity rate. And there was a question about, you know, what, are we looking at that? And I think you do share that data with us, but we do not factor, we did not factor that in as a decision trigger in Randi Wine's health and safety plan as a map.
So at this point, we blew out a bullet in our plan, that that should be taken into consideration? But if part of that we were all discussing, we're going to go through that. The percentage of positivity should be unredacted by the state.
Okay, so hopefully that helps clarify. I, I think this is factual. With Georgetown University in our close proximity, there are going to be more and more tests occurring for young people. I don't think it's a safe assumption, and if I misinterpreted the comment, I apologize, but I just want to be clear. I don't think it's a safe assumption to assume that only people who are symptomatic get tested. That is certainly not my experience. And in fact, that's, I think, the more tests don't, aren't an indicator of whether you're symptomatic or not. The outcome of those tests is, well, you know, what needs to be focused on, not the volume of tests, but the outcome of those tests, positive or negative. So I just wanted to clarify that comment as well. And what is St. Luke's current position? Have we asked them, given the fact that PDE has issued a data a couple of weeks ago of not fifty but a hundred? Did St. Luke's provide their opinion or did they challenge PDE? Do we have an update from St. Luke's, our medical person?
So at this point, the guidance we still have, they're getting from St. Luke's, is that they have looked at this, they realize that the state has moved and that they are, they weren't going to give us a straight cut point number. They said if you still go with the fifty, that is more conservative approach and obviously the safer approach to the process. That's what they had mentioned, that they were not, they couldn't give us a recommendation to say fifty or not. They kind of left it, they left it up to the school districts to make that ultimate decision. Again, with them speaking of the less than number, if we use fifty in our conversations, then that would be more conservative.
Okay, so they didn't really opine about it, they just reiterated the facts, which is the lower your number, the safer and more conservative, the higher your number, the more aggressive and potentially lasting. Okay, thanks.
I would just, just like to echo earlier that I'm encouraged and encouraged by the involvement by the community and would welcome that for any meeting going forward. It's amazing to hear the voices of the people we represent. I do encourage that moving forward. And just as, you know, history is ours, board and leadership, who we made this decision, we had early data and more data has come subsequently. But when we made this decision, we were all going to unify front on this decision with one name vote. So I just wanted to make that clear, that it was a decision that the board carried. Dr. Carter, not here, that's one, no vote for the fifty number. So it was something that all the board had a consensus of and took into consideration, both the safety of the students and the faculty based on the numbers that were presented and the data that was in our hands at the time of that decision.
So I have a clarifying question again, triggered by the audience, so again, break me back. Someone spoke about how they used our plan to make decisions about their family and that the districts had asked them with rather urgent turnaround time, understandably so, to commit to a five months timeframe for whether their kids would be taking classes in the building, if that was an option, or going virtual by choice in that family. So to follow up on that person's question, should the board tonight approve what's been proposed or put forth as a motion anyway? Can a family now switch in response to the board's changed decision? How does the administration feel about that and what is your plan to accommodate families who are now being whitewashed a little bit?
Well, that's the next part about our personal academy. If that is moving, there will be, we're only two days into instruction, so we still will be able to, in most of the larger academies. If that's the case, we just ask for this to be a little bit flexible location. And we will be able to transition and hold them, but we also have started up all the other teams that are now in that process. And so from a staff perspective, we can absolutely accommodate that and we just have older patients to be able to facilitate that process.
Okay, so while we kind of asked for a five month commitment, again, we're saying, should a family want to change their minds? We will be, to the best degree possible, flexible and accommodate their need to change as well.
Yes.
Okay. That's all. And just, I can't promise this is my last, but while I've got the floor, so the comment about faculty and Mr. Patazzi, right? I really appreciate that comment about the staff. And I agree with the audience members, several of you who commented about the robust benefits and options that the teachers and staff and administrators here at Randi Wine have. There's no question that it's a robust benefit package, but the comment, I drizzle with the comments saying that if staff are that uncomfortable, they should just go get another job. And yet, these are the same staff and faculty that are relying on to enforce the policies and to keep your kids safe. So I just, it's a very difficult balance between supporting faculty and kind of saying, hey, you don't like it here, go get yourself another job. We try really hard here at this district and I think we've been reasonably successful over quite a few union contracts and other negotiations of trying to strike the balance between being really supportive and attentive to the needs of our faculty and staff. Because of getting out of them, none of this works and none of our kids are happy in school and none of them are getting a good education. So I don't want faculty or staff or at Randi Wine to think for an instant that this board is dismissive in any way to their voice board, to their needs and to their safety.
Thank you, this is a very good point. Any other comments? Okay. Take a roll call, please. This is, again, this is one A to approve from the, approve the fifty for one hundred thousand to the one hundred to one hundred thousand for safety opening. So one A. See that?
Is there any appetite from the board to considering a number other than one hundred? And if the answer is no, it's based on, we're aligned with your, your attitude right now, aligned to.
We are following guidelines, we follow the guidelines.
Okay, and so back then, with that philosophy, is it reasonable to assume then that if PDE comes out tomorrow with the number that says forty-two, that this board would reconvene immediately and move to forty-two?
I think that's it. Kind of a slim statement, like, are they, you're like, one, two, we need.
But if we're gonna follow the guidelines, we're gonna follow the guidelines.
Yes, fine, I'm not opposed to it, but I just think that we cannot just give up numbers and leave it out. I mean, I was told in the last meeting, we're following guidelines, we're following guidelines. And then we get to this one point and it's, eh, we have to follow the guidelines.
So that's kind of why I asked you. So that's kind of why I ask you, because I'm trying to understand if our philosophy, as we make this decision, to embrace following guidelines? And if we vote yes to that, are we then also sort of suggesting or locking our intention to unlevel to follow the guidelines even when they don't support what we personally want, or what the community wants, or what our friends and family, or do you see what I mean? I'm just trying to get a gauge of what are my colleagues here, if we're following the guidelines, then that means we follow them when we like it, and it's favorable to our community. But we also respond and react just as quickly and aggressively if they, if it comes out different.
I mean, I don't love any of the guidelines, and I'm still learning.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, I kind of, I go inside, that's a bit of an inflammatory statement. The 42, I mean, what are we going to do if meteor hits the school tomorrow? We're going to have to shut down, and we're going to go fully virtual. No, 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 hold on, one second, I'm not done.
Yeah, it's not inflammatory at all, it's just an example, it's just a guideline.
Okay, so, I mean, the reality is, is like I said, I feel that if they did change the 42, yes, we'd have to reconvene, and yes, we'd have to come up with another number, because we're not in line with what they're doing. The reality is, is the Board is operating under emergency powers, because we started doing that back when we started doing our virtual meetings. I've been on this board, you've been on this board, over 10 years. We've never had to use emergency powers for any... This is, this is one of the situations that I think I would ask the community to be understanding. And I think as a Board member, we have to understand, this is fluid. We are going to be put in uncomfortable situations. We're going to be asked to make uncomfortable decisions, and we just have to do our best. And at this point, I mean, realistically, we didn't have enough time to process the information with that 100 number at the last meeting. We had our opportunity to process it. At this point, we've had an opportunity to reach out, get other, you know, other resources involved to get better data. And I think this is the best decision we can make right now. Fixation on why everybody wants to do it, although I understand some people need that to process. I don't think it really helps the conversation for this.
Well, I respectfully appreciate your comments. For me, as a decision maker, it absolutely is material. The basis or rationale behind which this Board is making a decision is absolutely pertinent to me, so that when I walk out of here, I can live with my vote, whether I support it or I don't. So I'm trying to read my colleagues and understand why are we making this decision? And the answer is to align ourselves with PDE. Then the next question in my mind is, that means it would be reasonable for folks to expect us to follow PDE in the future if it gets, if it goes in a direction we don't like? So I'm just, I'm trying to read that. It was not meant to be inflammatory, it's trying, I'm struggling with this decision. My advice is not to change and put people at risk, but I'm also trying desperately to listen to folks who have young kids in school that they want to be in school. So I'm trying to get comfortable being able to say yes to this, so... It's not inflammatory in any way.
And I appreciate your thought process, and I appreciate how you come to your decision. However, there's also other Board members up here that might be uncomfortable, being asked, or being felt like they're putting, being put on the spot to give a justification. And that's all, that's all I'm trying to, that's all I'm trying to make. And incidentally, we're all decision makers at this table. So everybody's decision-making process is different. That's all, that's all my statement was meant to convey.
Okay, and if you're uncomfortable, don't answer my questions. I'm just looking for anybody willing to share with me what your thought process on this is, and what we're at this point, or if we honor PDE's guidance. You all get that, in my mind, that means we honor it, whether we like it in the future or whether we don't.
I think you also said something that, you know, we don't make these decisions like based on ourselves. We can't be selfish with these decisions. So we're making a decision for families, telling them, you have to follow these guidelines. Yeah, we're not. And that's where I have to struggle with it, and that's how I tried to get some clarification last meeting, but, you know, because I knew when we left here, and I knew people were going to ask me, if you're following all the other guidelines, why didn't you make up this number? And that's why I didn't agree with what we were doing. And for me to go back and to now say, we are following all the guidelines, here's why. You know, and that's, and that's where I feel. And yeah, and I don't love the guidelines, but that's what I have to do, I have to make a decision for the people who are not necessarily bound. So that's...
And we're not far apart, just so we direct you on that. I had that same concern. The answer in my mind to the question of why did we make the different decision than the guidelines was because our medical partner, St. Luke's, had recommended 50. So in my mind, that's how I answered that same question, but I struggled with it as well.
Yeah, I just didn't want you to think I just don't. I only want to follow the guidelines, the guidelines, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't follow any guideline if we decide to do that. And I've been very comfortable, I've been like this way, we've been up in all of the places, but you... But I think as we're kind of, everyone's like, my, I've already made it in my mind, I've heard people talk about that, up in my head, and I'll be, I'll be, it's amazing. Everyone is always very prepared to deal with this, some people can't get it, folks, you know, anything. I think we just have to do whatever is best for the whole entire, you know.
Yeah, well, there's no question, I mean, we're doing our best, right? We're trying to do what's best for the community, and that's why, for me personally, I'm on the fence. And that's why I was asking, is there any way, because of negotiating, do we have to double from 50 to 100, or if we go to 75, for example? Said not aligned with Pennsylvania's PDE, but it's more aggressive than today, and it gives us a little more runway. Should the trend continue to go in a way that's unfavorable for the next week or two? In fact, I just got a news flash, and I didn't open it, but I came across a street, and it says, while Pennsylvania numbers look better, Burke County numbers are getting worse. And I'd love to understand why is that, what's happening in Burke County all the time the last two weeks, that dating the trend look negative? Right at the time, when we're making a decision that goes counter to that trend. Yeah, it'll be a huge change. But that's my concern too, if you go to 100, will it be faster in two weeks?
I think it's against their guidelines, that's it. We have to still follow the guidelines.
To reiterate, when we originally made this decision, 50 was not an arbitrary number. It was a number that Andrew did extensive research on and developed with St. Luke's guidance. Prior to that decision, or post that decision, the state came out with different guidelines. At the time, when we voted on the 50, we all voted yes, with the exception of Dr. Carter, so we were all in agreement. And now the guidelines change. This is a fluid process. Anyone who would have thought it would have been biased back in January or in March. It's unexpected, everything about us is unexpected, and now you can't plan. I mean, there's no way you can plan. What you can do is to first go forward here and put the process in place that we have, and be willing to make changes. As that, we're going to follow policies. I think it's important that constituents know that we're going to follow the policies that are being forward by the recommendations put forward by the Department of Education. And that's what we're going to follow. So, you know, I know you're not, you know, you're throwing arbitrary numbers out, but if they say, okay, it's getting bad, we're going to have to drop that number 42. Now, our constituents, you know, that's what we're going to follow. And I value that question that you, you know, put forward, because that's important. It's not, you know, we hear everyone's concerns, that they want to get this statement. So we, yes, that's important, because we also have to be open to the safety of everyone involved, not just in this, the school itself, but to the teachers, to the community members, to the multi-generational families that, you know, we serve, and to grandparents who watch the kids. There's a much larger picture here, it's different than masks, a mask. Do I need to wear a mask? No, it's to benefit others as well, so, you know, it's a community thing. So to answer that question as far as how I feel, we're going to follow guidelines, we're going to base it on 100, which you have now as new information. And we follow those guidelines, then if the state needs to back it, say, that's to be different, well, then we call it on emergency, and do exactly what we're doing. We have to be fluid in a process that this virus is an unknown future.
And Mr. Wagner, to that point, including the 50. Mr. Wagner, I think you mentioned earlier that this is a fluid, I mentioned that from the beginning. If there are changes that come from Department of Education, has to adjust our policy. If it says rate the policy, we have to approve that and resubmit it to the Department of Education. So that, to answer the question about will we follow, is, yeah, I have to approve those guidelines, update the information through the Board, to reconsider, and then resubmit to the PDE. I just want to make sure we have one thing clear on the guideline process. Right now, the Department of Education says we can basically use everything from 11 to 100. That's what it says right now. So when we say follow the guidelines, you threw an arbitrary number, 42. We will pick that, we'll just follow the State Department of Education guidance, which is why the 50 was definitely, that was the middle of 100 and the high end of it. It's not 40. And all that is within that are acceptable guidelines within the Department of Education's guideline right now. And if there's changes to that, then I would absolutely bring that back to the Board. We'll talk about it, and we'll make adjustments. This isn't a hard sentence, so, and just to hit the blip of the labor point, but just to illustrate that, when the Department of Education came out and said, here are the new mask guidelines, they also said, you have to adjust your health and safety plan, reapprove it, and send that in. So that is the level of detail and guidance that we're getting from the Department of Education when these things happen. So as a reassurance, we will comply with that.
Appreciate that. So one clarifying question, because my decision just changed. The PDE guidance goes from 11 to 100?
That's correct.
Okay, I was not aware of that, thank you.
That's the window for young. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Okay, moving on to B, this is looking at the rolling average. I think we kind of clarified that specific, what that means. Is there any public comment on that, or concerns, I think, from the Board? If not, any Board discussion on this matter?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Under going number two, other business, any other comments? Need for the Board discussion? All right, going to roll three, Terrence. Motion made by Mr. Wagner.
Certainly. I really like these bowls.
He was supposed to wear a m-.